The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Next, under Original Communications, Delegations, and Petitions, we would like to welcome the Southeast Saskatchewan Women of Distinction, and we have some distinguished ladies with us this evening. So I take it Becky, you and Tanya are going to be the spokesmen, and Laurie is your backup in case things go south? Okay, please take it away Becky, and just hit the button on the mic, please.
Perfect, thanks so much for having us. As we gear up, oh, let it go. As we gear up for our second annual Women of Distinction Awards, we are here to present the city of Estevan with a sponsorship proposal. So I'll tell you a little bit about the Southeast Saskatchewan Women of Distinction Awards, how we came about, and what our plans are for this year, and then we can dive into the package that was sent out. I'm sure you all have that in front of you. So this is our second annual Southeast Saskatchewan Women of Distinction Awards. It's happening on May 2nd. This year, we are moving our event to the Wiley Mitchell Hall to have some more space. Last year, we found that it was a little bit cramped. We are very excited about this event because last year was kind of a comeback from the Women of Today Awards that had run for 21 years, and we sold out probably within days, I would say, and people were really excited to have it back. We think it's very important to celebrate women, to lift them for their achievements, help them celebrate the things that they've done in the community, at work, and just in general. We have five awards. We have the Innovator Award, which is an entrepreneurial leadership award, Outstanding Contribution to the Workplace Award, the Outstanding Young Visionary Award, the Equity Award, which is a non-traditional overcoming barriers award, and the Outstanding Contribution to the Community Award. So this event again is on May 2nd, and it's really quite important that we have community buy-in, and we do, and we have for this event. We have lots of wonderful sponsors. It is a nonprofit. We are all volunteers, and all money raised is going to be going to a scholarship program. So last year, we raised minimal funds, just trying to get our feet wet, get the event up and running, and we made a donation to the Girl Guides for $500. We made a donation to a couple of the high school teams who were involved, and this year we're planning to make a $2,000 donation to the winner of the Young Visionary Award, winner, and then all of the other females that are, is that what it's called? The Young Visionary Award? Outstanding Young Visionary Award. So all of the other individuals who are nominated will also receive a small donation as well, but we will have a $2,000 donation for the winner of that. So with that being said, I mean, I'll tell you a few statistics about women and awards in Canada. Just doing a quick Google search, women are less likely to win a research award by 80%. Women are more likely to win an award when they have a more masculine name, or when no names are attached to the nomination. And most alarmingly, Canada was ranked 30th place in the 2023 Global Gender Gap Index ranking out of 146 countries. In Canada, women hold 15% of premier positions, 18% of mayoral positions, and 28% of councillor seats. Here in Estevan, we do a very good job. We have some very powerful and intelligent women on council, and we, as a committee, feel it's very important to be helping, to help lift women and just celebrate them for their successes. So before I dive into the actual ask or the sponsorship request, does anyone have any questions for us about our event this year?
Any questions from members of council? Not at this time. Becky, and we're happy to say probably close to half of our workforce at the city are women, so we're very proud of that.
Yeah, that is very, very impressive, for sure. So our ask this year...
We do have a question, Councilor Roba.
I was just gonna ask, because I think I did read where your ask is, but when you do your ask, can you also include what the city gave last year?
Yes, we can. So last year, the city of Estevan, I don't believe, was involved in this event.
Yeah, I don't think we were asked, Councilor Roba, no?
We did have, we did put a request.
We put a request.
Were we asked?
Yeah, I remember, I just didn't remember the name.
Oh.
But we did not come to council and do a full presentation like this. So I think we've sent you a letter asking to purchase a table or something like that, yeah, for sure.
Okay.
So our ask is, because we're moving to the Wiley Mitchell, it's very important to us that we make the venue beautiful and ready to go for this event. We are asking for 40 round tables, pipe and drape to cover the walls of the Wiley Mitchell Hall, and a stage section of 12 feet long. I understand your staged sections are actually eight by 14 sections, so that can be changed, including delivery setup and takedown. Setup would be on May 1st at 1:00 p.m., with cleanup being at 2:00 p.m. on May 2nd. We did do some research to see what the current cost of this would be, but what we don't understand is the delivery, if that's possible, cleanup, setup. In terms of the cost of tables, we kind of have a leisure services rental package here, and tables are, it says, $2 each. Pipe and drape is $20 per 10-foot section, but again, this is for a quote, a quote for the curling rink, which is a city facility. So we understand that this could be much different, but that being said, the ask, if it was in a city facility, would be around $500, but because it's delivery, takedown in a non-city facility, we understand that that would have increased costs, if it is at all possible. So we, in return, are offering an emerald sponsor, which is valued at $2,000. As part of that, you will have name mentions via our MC at both events, and in all print material. At the main event, your company, it says company banner, but the city of Estevan banner would be displayed at the nomination ceremony and the awards banquet, and you would also receive one table of eight to the awards banquet on May 2nd. I should add to that that this event is two parts. We have a nomination luncheon that happens before the main event, so that's where that mention is, at the other event, that you would have your banner at that event. That's where we announce who has been nominated. So that is our ask, and I would put it to you to see if there's any questions, unless there's anything you'd like to add.
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you Becky, and yeah, we had Erin check things out. It was around $2,000 to do this. The only thing she did mention, at that time, we're pretty busy, so if you could help with the volunteers with the setup and takedown, would be helpful, she did mention, because we are short-staffed with what we have going on at that time. Councilor Roba?
Thank you, Your Worship. So the only problem I do see with this, with it not being a city facility, and I speak from experience, because we actually did this one time, and asked to have the tables brought over, is if at that time, there's anything soft around there, like the ground trying to get through the parking lot, if it's soft, it's very hard. Yeah, I think it's great if the city does sponsor this event in some sort, but would you be open to using the tables at the Wiley Mitchell and chairs that are already there?
We would rather not, for sure. That's why we're here to ask, for sure.
Okay, so that is probably not an option, but would you be willing in a backup plan in the event that the city can't get the forklift or something over there?
Of course, yeah.
Okay, because I think that is probably one of the biggest issues, is normally, these kind of things don't leave the city facilities, because when they do leave, sometimes, you know, the pipe, the drape, all that stuff doesn't really come back, and that was probably one of the bigger concerns, and then also with the volunteer stuff. But I'm gonna let other council members speak if they have any issues with the request.
Okay, Councilor Waliser.
One other concern that was identified for us from city staff is that typically, when we do a table rental, it is the rectangular tables that we rent, not the round tables, just because they cost so much more. Should they become damaged? So one of the suggestions was that we rent out rectangular tables. Is that not helpful to you? You would much prefer the round tables?
So the Wiley Mitchell has rectangular tables, and we are requesting because the tables are round, yeah.
And maybe just to address the fear that something would, you know, happen, this is not an evening event, this is not a drinking event, it is during the day, and it would all be set up and torn down, you know, during the day, and it's a pretty brief period when the individuals will be there, so I would say there's less risk in the event itself. I mean, I'm sure, like you say, Shelley, the travel, the transport could be, you know, more of a challenge, but the event itself, little danger of damage during the event.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yep, no problem. Councilor Clark?
Thank you, Your Worship. Certainly, great for you to do this in our community, and I think it's important, you know, that we do what we can, and that it, and some of those small details that we, that I'm sure we can work out at that time, and as somebody that's benefited by having a girl's name and getting votes, I appreciate that. But I do support that we should be able to work with you to do what we can.
Okay, go ahead, Councilor Ford.
Your Worship, thank you. I think some of the risk with renting out the round tables and worrying about them getting broken is mitigated a little bit by having city staff come and help set them up, and I know, like, I'm sure we'll be able to help, help find some volunteers who'll be able to help set up as well. I mean, we all know people in the community who are willing to help, so I think that would truly mitigate some of the setup and takedown in that aspect, because then it is city staff helping put things together.
Okay, Councilor Cernic.
Thank you, Your Worship. How tight is the setup and tear, takedown? Like, obviously, you have it planned for 1:00 and 2:00, but again, that just might hamper with the city having the employees ready and all that sort of stuff. Normally, when they set up the curling rink or something, they have days to go in, maybe set some up sometime or something like that, so.
For sure.
Just, yeah, so if that could be expanded, I'm sure that would help as well, too.
So yeah, we have the facility the entire day before the event, starting at 1:00 p.m. until we need it, until it's done. And setup and takedown, in my experience, for something like that, once it's there, will likely take an hour, and we do have a great volunteer crew. We have a very robust volunteer group in Estevan, through the high school and through other people, so as long as we knew how many volunteers they needed, we could make that happen, absolutely.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
Councilor Roba?
I will make the motion that we grant your request, and that we sponsor the $2,000 sponsorship package.
Okay, have we got, Councilor Waliser?
I'll second the motion with a note that we are looking to offset some of the employee costs through volunteers.
Okay, and that's well noted, right? So that's great, and we appreciate the help. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, ready for the motion? All in favor? Carrie, there you go, ladies.
Thank you. Just one more note, that today nominations for the event do open, and so we encourage particularly the councilors, if you know someone, some deserving female woman that you would like to nominate, and additionally, our sponsorship packages are also available, so if you have a company on the side, or you know someone who might want to also sponsor us, or someone who's watching the meeting tonight at home would be interested in sponsoring, you can go to our website, which is sewomen.southeastssaskitewomennofdistinctionawards. If you look that up, you can contact us, or if you know me or Becky, get in touch with us.
Okay, thank you, Tanya. And thank you, ladies, for coming in. Appreciate it.
Perfect, thanks so much for having us.
Yep, no problem, and you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. I know you would all enjoy it very much, but perhaps you have got a busy evening planned, and you had other plans. Otherwise, I'm sure you would have stayed.
You would.
Okay, thank you. Good night, ladies.
Good night.
Okay, moving forward, we have the SETPC membership for 2024. What's the wish of council on this? Sorry, Councilor Clark, go ahead.
Thanks, Your Worship. I just, maybe I'll do a little preamble, that the rates have gone up this year, the last, I think it was three years ago when they raised them, there was a maximum at $660 that they didn't raise them. They left the maximum where it was, so this time, we said that it probably should go up, so they actually went up 10%, even though they weren't, it didn't raise last time. I just want to talk a little bit about Southeast transportation. They are certainly our sort of voice to the province on roads in this area, and I think they do a good job of doing that. They're also moving to the economic side, where they're looking to say, what's going on in your community that's going to change the use of the roads? What are the, what are the primary routes for the roads? And it's an interesting committee, because you have people from, from all over this corner telling you what's going on in their area, so the information that's gathered is invaluable for that, plus with some of the stuff that's going on, it's important that sometimes the road structure has to be done before, before the project is. So it's a good chance for the government to hear what is going on in our area, and I would like to put the motion forward that we pay the annual bill that's been presented.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Clark, and yeah, they, it's a good thing, and I appreciate the fact you're on that committee. They do get together, they go over all of the concerns from this part of the province, and I know, thanks to the committee getting together, along with us lobbying our minister, MLA Minister Carr, we were able to get the Roche Percy Road fixed up with all of the other surrounding RMs, so I think it does have mutual benefit, and I think it's a, it's a positive thing, for sure. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, you've made the motion, have we got a second or? Thank you, Councilor Cernic. Any further discussion, comments, questions? If not, all in favor? Carrie, thank you.
I only second it because Lindsay's gonna promise to do Highway 47 next.
Thanks, Your Worship. We actually rate the highways, and it is fairly highly rated that it needs to be done, although we do have an RMR administrator that thinks Highway 18 is more important.
Well, would he happen to label out that road?
The chair of the committee lives on the other floor.
No conflict, sorry, no conflict. Okay, moving forward, thank you. Under Original Communications, Delegations, and Petitions, we have a request from Hudson Bay Route membership for 2024. Now, I know there's not a lot that we're doing right now with the Churchill. As the world warms, the Northwest Passage will continue to thaw out, and I know they are looking at more and more goods and services, perhaps going the way of Churchill. Of course, we're not there yet, but I guess it doesn't hurt to stay in touch with these people and to share the information that they glean, so it's totally up to council. What's the wish on this? Councilor Roba?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, I think actually the last few years, we have been paying this for exactly the reasons why you just spoke about, and I think, especially being an oil town, we need to continue supporting that, just to keep all the routes open, so.
Okay, thank you for that, and with that, do you have a motion?
Sorry, I meant to finish that sentence. I will make that motion to pay that, yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Cernic, you have, or second?
I was just gonna second the motion.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Ford, had you wanted?
I was gonna second it.
Oh, okay, thank you for that. So ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Just, sorry.
Go ahead, Councilor.
Could we request even just a Zoom update with this group?
Absolutely, we can.
Come on, yeah, see what they want.
And that's a good idea. Sure, we'll, we'll ask for information. Okay, next, under Original Communications, Delegations, and Petitions, we have the GFL cart report for January. Just thumbnail sketch, trash carts count, 12,836, total weight, 210,850, the average weight per cart, 16.43, the recycle, cart count, 3,887, total weight, 28,842, average weight, 7.42. Now, that would be kilograms, so you have to multiply that by 2.2. So any questions or comments from council? Councilor Ford?
Thanks, Your Worship. Just a reminder to the public, if you do need your bin replaced after all this wind and snow and turmoil, just call City Hall, and you can get put on notice to have your bin replaced, instead of calling GFL.
Okay, thank you for that, or they can call GFL for lids.
That's what you should call.
Yeah.
It's on our city website to call the city.
Yeah, you can.
So that's why I've been directing people.
You can, or you can, you can go direct, thank you, to GFL, and I know sometimes the lids get broke, or, like you say, with the heavy wind, get blown off or damaged, but they're happy to come by with a phone call and get them fixed up. So did we have a motion for that? Councilor Clark? Seconded by Councilor Waliser. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under Written Reports of Committees, we have from the Service Valley Museum, minutes of January 17th. Could we have a motion, please, for that? Councilor Clark? Seconded by Councilor Cernic, thank you. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under Written Reports of Committees, we have from the Estevan Public Library, the minutes of January 16th. Could we have a motion, please, for that? Thank you, Councilor Waliser, seconded by Councilor Roba. Any questions or comments? Councilor Waliser?
Thank you, Your Worship. We are at the library every Wednesday for their children's program, and they were quite pleased to show me a brand-new feature of the library. Previously, you can use an app or call the library to request titles from all over Saskatchewan. They're held behind the desk. You meet with the library and check them out at that time. There's now an express process that's coming into place, so if you order a book from anywhere in Saskatchewan, it'll ship to your home library, it'll be placed on the bookshelf, and it's as easy as walking in and taking your book with your name on it off the shelf and away you go. So a really wonderful service, so that you don't have to, you don't even have to think about it. If you see a book that you want, you just ask your library, and they will put it on the shelf with your name on it, so a really exciting development to see.
Yes, absolutely, thank you for that, Councilor Waliser, and I know they have computers available. I know a lot of our newcomers access the library a lot and find it very helpful, so that, that's a good thing. All in favor? Carrie, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilor Roba.
I know, I'm so quiet usually.
Yes, you're so quiet over there, yes.
So actually, thank you, Councilor Waliser, for promoting the programs also that the library offers, because something that the money that the city basically mandated per capita to give is roughly around the $400,000 mark annually, and that money does not cover the program. So this year, as a council, we did reduce the amount that we provide over and above the $400,000, and it was $10,000 we gave this year. The reason that we reduced it is because we're trying to be more vigilant with the dollars that we give out with the third-party granting, and we are looking at the money that they hold in their extra funds, and so the library is fortunate right now that they do have a little bit of a surplus, so they're gonna work at using that for a lot of the programming, and then the city gave them less money this year. One of their concerns, though, is that the city will forget that we used to give 20 and 25,000 in the programming, and that they will end up getting less, because future councils down the road will not remember that. So I just wanted to say tonight that in the event that none of us are sitting on the next council, I will hopefully come back here and remind the new council that the money should still be given to the library, because the programming is important, and I don't want anyone to believe that just because the city of Estevan cut the programming money, we still don't believe the program will be cut, because we've ensured that the funds are there. So yes, we are very involved in our museum, or I'm sorry, our library, also our museum that Councilor Clark is in, but I just had the Libby app where I downloaded, and I was able to read a book on it, and again, done it early, so I returned it so someone else could get it, sometimes there's a waiting list, but we have copious amounts of programming that is available free of charge through the library, so for any of people that are out there that haven't visited the library, you can read any magazine, any newspaper, and if there isn't a book that they don't have, you could ask to have it brought in from another library, so full of programs, full of things to do in the evening, free of charge, all of it is free of charge, because your tax dollars do go towards keeping that library, and again, in 2016, when I joined council, I had many people question me, what is the value of the library? And if you haven't been there lately, I suggest you go, because you'll learn the value of the library very quickly, and the dollars there are spent very wisely, so thank you, and hopefully, we just don't ever cut them right off.
Yeah, and of course, we still give them $400,000 and change every year, so, yeah.
Yeah, just to clarify, the $400,000 go towards the region, so that basically is not spent locally, in a sense that it's spent locally in the books, in the staffing, et cetera, just not the programming. So the extra money that the city of Estevan and the other RMs that they get funding from, or the grants, that money goes directly to the programming, and also things like the free Wi-Fi, that kind of thing, so that's why the people who are on the library board are very passionate about reading the library literature, and they were just very fearful that their voice would go unheard in future years, to be able to still continue with the actual funding that's needed to have the programming, and it's roughly $40,000 a year, so I just wanted to put it out there to make sure that we don't forget about the library funding and future budgets.
And I'm sure Councilor Roba realizing the value of the library, if they did approach even a new council, hopefully, they'll feel the same way. Okay, thank you for that. Okay, moving forward, under Executive Reports, we have the Public Works Priority Snow Removal Map, and thank you, Haley, for coming this evening and being with us, and being able to answer any questions we may have. Any questions or comments from council? Did you have anything you'd like to say, Haley? Okay, no problem. Councilor Roba, then Councilor Waliser.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you for coming, Haley. I know I've been talking to you lately. There's nine snow dumps in the area, and I know we had questions about it, but I don't believe tonight we're talking about that, we're just talking about the routes, right?
Your Worship to Councilor Roba? Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so yeah, so I'd just like to ask that we don't make sure that on the next meeting, that we do bring the snow dump sites to, but yeah, and I have no problem with this, I think that it's very good, and the snow removal that you guys just finished with, our latest, I know we didn't have a lot this year, thankfully, but it went very well, and everything seemed very efficient, so good for you and your crew.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Waliser, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. I also want to echo Councilor Roba. I think we are very fortunate with the level of snow removal that we see in Estevan, to the point that we take it for granted, so not realizing how good our roads are, we forget that this isn't normal elsewhere. I wanted to highlight the city of Saskatoon's snow removal policy, because it's shocking in its difference to Estevan. If the snowpack on your street is greater than 15 centimeters, then you can request that the city come scrape your street. They will scrape it into the parking lane, and they will not haul it away. That is their policy, and we are so fortunate that not only are we out scraping the streets, but we're hauling that moisture off the roads, too, so I really want to thank you for your efforts, but also remind people that this is, this is something that we're extraordinarily fortunate for, and that having to wait a day or two to be able to turn left at your favorite spot to turn left is not really a hardship, considering the value of the snow removal service we receive.
Absolutely. Thank you for that, Councilor Waliser. Councilor Clark?
Thanks, Your Worship. Just wondering, last year, there was some changes with the Department of Highways that we were now expected to do some further out towards that. Has that caused us any problems, or has that effectively taken place yet?
Your Worship to Councilor Clark? No, it's actually running very smooth. We have that plow for our sanding truck, and we do all the areas.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments from council? Councilor Ford?
Thanks, Your Worship. I agree with everybody, snow removal's been absolutely great. The areas that have been identified is actually an area that I live in, it doesn't actually apply to me, but it's, it's a mess in that area. Those townhouses were built where there's no actually yards for people to push their snow into, so snow effectively does get pushed into the street, because people have nowhere else to put it, or else they're gonna have, some, some of the snow blows in from those ball diamonds, and they get six-foot drifts in their yards, or their front driveways with absolutely nowhere to go, so I'll make the motion to accept the recommendation to add these, these streets to the list of exceptions.
Okay, thank you for that. Councilor Ford, have we got a second or? Councilor Cernic, thank you. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you so much, Haley, you do a fantastic job. Again, we have the best staff, second to none, and you're continuing a great tradition, so thank you for that. Okay, next up, Richard, you want to step up to the mic? Thank you, Richard, for coming tonight. Next, under Executive Reports, we have from Land Development. Uh, next, under executive reports, we have from land development, the application for 137 King Street Long-Term Land Lease. Would you like to quickly go over that for us?
Sure, thank you, Your Worship. Um, under Planning and Development Act, a lease that covers part of a parcel, not entire parcel, but just a portion of it, if the lease has a term longer than 10 years or with renewals can exceed 10 years, in order to be considered valid by the municipality and the province, it needs to go through the subdivision process. So in this case, it's the gas bar at the No Frills. The Lob laws wants to have a long-term lease on there. And so they're running through this. This will not create a second lot. Basically, this approval, yeah, I, if council were to approve this, would be attached to the lease agreement that would be registered on the title. In this particular case, uh, there's no request for new accesses onto King Street or new water sewer services. Everything on the ground would remain the way it is. And with that, Your Worship, if there's any questions?
Okay, uh, thank you, Richard. I'll just go over the recommendation, uh, for council is, number one, the approval be applied as a supporting document for an interest registration or amendment to an interest registration for a lease associated with survey file, R17080, as prepared by Meridian Surveys, March twentieth nineteen. That a certificate of approval fee of $150 be paid by the applicant slash landowner. This approval does not include an approval or support for a new King Street access or municipal utility connection to the lease area. So thank you for that, Richard. Uh, what's the wish of council? Do we have a motion on that? Thank, thank you, Councillor Sernick. Have we got a second here? Thank you, Councillor Clark. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Okay, Richard, uh, you're going to stay with us. The next is land development application for bed and breakfast, 902 Second Street. Did you want to say a little bit about that?
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, 902 Second Street, there is a residence there and then there's a detached garage to the south of the residence. And on the second story of the garage, there's a, uh, secondary suite that was approved a number of years ago. We do not have, under our current zoning bylaw, rules and regulations on secondary suites as to the term of a lease, whether it be month-to-month or, or what have you, or shorter time. In this case, the landowner has been running this as a bed and breakfast, a fairly successful one, it's from all appearances. And would like to have the property, or at least that land use formally recognized as a bed and breakfast. In which case, the, the property would then be treated as a commercial, at least the suite area. Uh, we, in the last number of years since they've operated, we never received a single complaint regarding the use. As you can see, when, as part of this development permit referral, we referred it to the neighbors, there was one objection that came in. I believe council has that in their package. And it was mostly concerned with privacy. The, this approval would not, if, if council grants this approval, would not change the use there at all, but would give this landowner standing as a recognized bed and breakfast operation so that this landowner could then, uh, potentially take part in accommodation listings. When there's, uh, an event in the city, there'd be a commercial business license for it. And, and my department's recommending that council consider approval of this use.
Okay, thank you, Richard. I'll just go over the recommendations. Number one, bed and breakfast maintain a business license with the city of Estevan. Number two, developer to provide sufficient off-street parking to accommodate the use. And number three, operator to reside in principal residence on the property. Councillor Proba, you have a comment?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, I have a couple distincts. So this is actually 902 is the loft, right?
Yes.
Same property, just to clarify. So I guess I'm a little confused. The loft compared to the bed and breakfast, the only difference would be is they are actually going to offer these people a breakfast. Because right now the loft is operating as a commercial business by offering people a place to stay.
Yeah, it's operating the place to stay. They can offer a meal with the stay if they wish.
So they already have a business license for the loft?
Uh, no, the, the loft currently, it's a, uh, secondary suite and they're operating that without a business license. She would like to advance it to the point where she would be required, uh, to have a business license and have that commercial standing.
So I guess I'm wondering if we're allowing people to rent out on a nightly basis already, they are, we obviously should probably be looking at those kind of people, uh, places that are, because I mean, I think people are utilizing it, which is great for them. But also, once she does this and turns it into a commercial, now commercial taxes would not be paid on that portion of the property?
That may be the case. I would, I would, I would have to review that with, uh, taxation.
Yeah, I would assume that would take place and that, yeah. So I don't have a problem. I know we did have one concern, but I also think we need to look at the fact that it's been proven that regardless of the fact that if you're going to just offer breakfast to the people that are now coming and you've already been operating for four years, no issues, there should not be an issue in this either. I think if anything, bed and breakfast even offers an even different clientele than what might offer in just a short-term rental that it's been currently been utilized as. So I would have no problem with, um, approving the recommendation that they can operate as a bed and breakfast and maintain a business license with the city of Estevan and then there'll be a commercial property for that portion.
Okay, so you're making that motion, Councillor Proba? Okay, thank you. Uh, go ahead, Councillor Clark.
Uh, thanks, Your Worship. I just, I just have a, uh, question here. So would they be able to operate as both, a short-term rental or a, a bed and breakfast, or are they one or the other?
Bed and breakfast, uh, sorry, Your Worship to Councillor Clark. Bed and breakfast, short-term rental are pretty near an equivalency. What this would allow is for them to, uh, do short-term rental or a long-term rental at their discretion, depending on what their goals are at that particular time.
Okay, Councillor Wallyser?
In this situation, the homeowner came to us. Likely there are other situations in Estevan that we're just not currently aware of. In your opinion, is this something that a policy should be developed around? Is there enough of that short-term rental happening in Estevan that we need to pursue this more globally?
Your Worship to Councillor Wallyser, um, I went through a 90-page report that was done by FCM in, in conjunction with Canadian Institute of Planners. Short-term rental housing, which is the more modern, uh, terminology for it, is very difficult to regulate, uh, especially in smaller communities. Airbnb is not the only site that does this. Uh, when I talked to Regina, people may remember, I think this might, this is before COVID, I believe. Uh, City Regina instituted a, a tourism tax for hotels. And hotel owners in Regina said, yeah, okay, fine, but we want these bed and breakfasts to pay as well. And so City Regina had to go into, uh, an enforcement, uh, mode with them. And when I talked to City Regina, the people responsible, there's about three staff members, I think, employed full-time just looking after this. They pay several thousand dollars a month for this, uh, program that scrubs the internet. Airbnb will cooperate with the municipality, but you have to prove to Airbnb that you're treating all other platforms the same way. Uh, four years ago, there was almost 700 other platforms around, around the globe that were advertising in Regina for short-term rentals. So it, it does require a level sophistication that we don't currently offer here. We definitely can amend our bylaws to, say, for example, say that, uh, sh- um, a secondary suite can only be used for minimum of a month-to-month rental. But enforcing it with our current infrastructure would be very difficult, I would say.
Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Uh, any other questions or comments? Uh, Councillor Sernick?
Thank you, Worship. I'll second the motion.
Okay.
I think in this case, it's already there and they're just looking to expand their marketing ability, right? So I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you for that. Any further comments, questions? Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Uh, you're busy tonight, Richard. Uh, next up, land development rideshare report.
Your Worship, do you want me to just go through the highlights of this?
Yeah, please.
Okay.
The highlights will be fine.
Originally, I was just asked to put a report together for the city manager. I wasn't, I wasn't expecting it to wind up here. Question of ride sharing, uh, the two most common ones, Uber and Lyft, as an example. There, there is provincial legislation now in effect in Saskatchewan, the vehicle for hire and reg- uh, regu- and accompanying regulation. Uh, it was updated in 2022. So if Uber, Lyft, as an example, wanted to serve, uh, provide services in Saskatchewan, they have to meet the, uh, the act and the regulations. Under that act, they also require an agreement with any municipality that would be hosting the service. And, um, under the current zoning bylaw, we have ride-sharing services allowed. But that is basically it for regulation that I'm aware of in the city. We have the option, uh, and I think we're amongst not too large a group of municipalities where a taxi cab company can offer a service as a home-based business. And that's two of the biggest, um, requirements there is that the taxi cab has to be owner-operator and it's the resident of the home where the taxi cab is parked, has to be the only operator for that cab. And it can only be one cab marked at a time. We, we have had businesses and currently have one that's operating in, under that, uh, model. A municipal rideshare bylaw, I looked at a couple example, or a few examples. Uh, City Moose Jaw, for example, City Regina. Notable, uh, inclusion in City Regina is that the city, uh, obtains a fee on every instance that a rideshare is activated. And that would be, for example, from, uh, Uber, that would be when you pay your Uber fee, there'd be, it'd be marked on your bill and then every month Regina has to, they, they receive a check from Uber. Edmonton has a minimum fare for rideshare. Uh, which was another one that would be of note. Terms of economics, um, from what I could tell, Uber takes 20 to 25% of the gross fare right off the top as their fee for using their service. And from different sites that I looked at, the driver themselves makes about $16 an hour. Out of that $16 an hour, you have to pay for your insurance, car repairs, fuel, everything. About 80% of Uber, Uber drivers quit the business after eight months. And after a year or two, you're generally looking at only about 5% of the drivers with long-term experience. There, we have that option again, as I said before, with taxi companies where after their expenses for their vehicles and, and taxi bylaw, they get to keep 100% of their earnings. In terms of regulated rates, one, um, community that stands out is Chatham, Ontario. I never contacted them to see how it worked out, but what they did when they put in their rideshare bylaw is they eliminated minimum fares for taxi cabs. So everybody's on the same level. Uh, there would have to be some reporting, though they did have a mechanism that the city put into place to monitor price fixing, price gouging, what have you. The, uh, ability to get Uber here, there are communities that Uber provides services to, as an example, that are smaller than Estevan. However, typically those communities have a tourism venue that might be, even if it's seasonal, that brings a lot of people in. Uh, so population is a factor. The other one is reliability and affordability of the existing transportation options. I have been told that, from what I, from my research, that a community can formally request Uber to move into their community if they have a bylaw in place especially. Um, how often that's successful, I don't know. They have their own metrics that they look at for when they decide to go somewhere. In terms of a path forward, I outlined some options, Your Worship. The city could approach Uber or Lyft and see if they're interested in servicing Estevan. Potential pitfall of this is that that could be looked upon, uh, negatively by our existing cab services. We could proactively create a rideshare bylaw. Again, we'll have the same issue with the taxi operators. I can't, from what I've seen, different communities I've lived in, I don't know of a single instance where, uh, Uber or Lyft moving into community was warmly received by the taxi cab companies. Uh, there was one instance that I came across where, uh, I think it was Uber. They allowed the taxi cab companies to jointly use the app. What the fee would be for that, I don't know, but you go on the Uber app and you could find an Uber driver or a taxi cab driver at the same time. One other thing that surprised me, um, because like I lived most of my life in Alberta and under their regulations, like in Edmonton, for example, uh, an Uber driver had to have a Class Four license, just like a taxi cab. Here in Saskatchewan, taxi or Uber can both operate on a Class Five license, provided they meet certain criteria. And then, Your Worship, uh, last option, we could do a survey and gauge to see what kind of support or action there may be for this kind of service in Estevan.
Okay, thank you, Richard, for that. I find it interesting that 80% of Uber drivers after eight months quit. That's interesting, uh, Democrat. Go ahead, Councillor Ford.
Thanks, Your Worship. Over Christmas, I actually received a phone call from a, a bar owner in town and they were hosting an event and they had 90 people at 2:00 in the morning ready to go home. And unfortunately, our community, five taxi companies, sometimes only means five taxis are running. And on that particular night, there was another event happening in town, there was another Christmas party and the bar owners actually had to drive all of these people home throughout the course of 2:00 in the morning. So they, they had requested and asked, you know, is, is there an option for some sort of ridesharing program in the community? And I think it would be interesting to gauge the community because in our community, it's, when you have a night like Lobster Fest, when you have a night where you have two weddings in town, where you have a Bruins game, when 300 people are pouring out of a building, you, you, we don't have enough to meet the demand in terms of taxi cabs. And especially when we, our taxi cabs are kind enough to offer rides to Bean Fade out to the dam, to surrounding farms, some of those cab rides sometimes take an hour or so, then you're down to a limited number of cabs that you can take on a community. And it's, it's really hard when it's cold out to justify walking home, right? I mean, lots of people do it, but there's a lot of people who, you know, choose to participate in, in drinking and having fun when they're out and that's great and supporting the community, but they should also deserve, be allowed to find a safe ride home as opposed to walking. So I do think we should explore this and it's not to, not to say we lack confidence in our taxi cab companies in town. I just, I just do think on big event nights, we don't meet our demand for people needing rides. So I, I personally would like to see some sort of survey, just even to talk to some of the businesses in town, some of the restaurants, to see how they, how they would feel about it and how they experience large events in their, in their businesses.
Okay, uh, thank you, Councillor Ford. Uh, Councillor Proba?
Thank you, Your Worship. Um, thank you, Richard, again. And I agree with Councillor Ford. I think it's, uh, something we can explore. I definitely don't want to step on toes of a cab company because especially when we talk about somebody making $16 an hour and still having to pay their expenses. I'm pretty sure the cab companies in Estevan are not booming with business on most, uh, days. Especially, you know, and again, I don't know that. I'm guessing because I don't really take a cab that often. But I do appreciate that they're there if I ever do need one. And so I think that the rideshare program could possibly just supplement the cab companies on nights such as those big events. And I don't know how that would look. I don't even know if there would be people in Estevan interested in using their personal vehicles for that type of thing. Um, I don't think it hurts. I don't think it hurts to explore, and I don't think it hurts to get feedback from the actual cab companies in Estevan that are currently running, to even find out just what is their long-term business plan, how many cab companies, or how many cabs they actually have on the road at any given time. And like Councillor Ford said, I know with the out-of-town drives, we also have a lot of people in rural areas that are looking for rides home in the evening, and a ride-share could supplement that. So I think it would be, it would be interesting to have you explore that option.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Vroba. I'm hearing we would like further research, dig into it a bit more, get a little bit more feedback. Do we have the motion, then, to accept the report with the caveat that we'll ask Richard if he wouldn't mind to do a little bit more research and get some more feedback? And Councillor Vroba, you'll second that?
No, you took the words right out of Councillor Ford's mouth, and I'll second that.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried, thank you. Okay, Richard, you're a busy man tonight. The annual Land Development Annual Summary Report. Would you like to quickly go over that, please?
Sure, thank you, Your Worship. As part of the official community plan, I need to provide an annual report to city administration every year as to how we're doing with our goals and objectives that were outlined in that plan. That's so that, over time, we can see, we set this goal in 2022, now it's 2030, how close have we come to achieving it? In terms, and then I've added in other stuff as well. In terms of division activities, under the new zoning bylaws, council may remember, for development permits, the province told me to stop having dual development and building permits on structures anymore, because it's different legislation. As a consequence of that, as you can see for 2023, on page one there, the development permits jumped quite considerably from 2022, from 43 up to 73 permits. So that was to be expected, and it's about what I was anticipating. Just as a comparison, we're around, I think, development permit number 16 so far for this year. January was busier this year than any month was last year. For subdivision activities, fairly mild. We had three subdivisions in total last year. We had five the year before and five before that. Zoning bylaw, we only had one amendment to the zoning bylaw, and that was the one that was sponsored by Land Development to clean up errors and emissions in the bylaw. Enforcement activities, we really only had one major one, which was for a legal suite. We put a stop order on the gentleman's title for that. We had one appeal last year for, to allow for an oversized garage in Saragella Place. No funds were collected last year for off-site development levies. Building function, building permits were up last year from the year before, but the construction value was down, so we're expecting better things this year. Under the OCP for Major Projects, Glen Peterson Neighborhood Plan, we're still, I'm trying to work with marketing to find some suitable dates for that. Council wanted an open house to be held for it, and that was in the first quarter, I believe, of last year. We still haven't held it. The, making the planning process more user-friendly, we've got a couple of our brochures out for this year, and we hope to have more done through the course of 2024. Future neighborhood plans, the city center plan or downtown plan, which is based on the Harris Report, that is anticipated to be circulated through to operations and administration for comment later on this week. It's at that point right now. And then after that has run its course, then it'll be brought forward to council for an initial look. Our GIS, we're continuing to upgrade that and update it as, as much as we can. One of the interesting features that we've got going on currently is to allow people to do online applications for building permits. Business licensing, it's up, although only marginal from last year. 639 permits in total last year, followed by 637 in 2022. And I have a graph there showing that. One thing that I did in 2022, and when the Harris Report was being circulated, is I went and did a capacity study on downtown to see how many storefronts were vacant. And this is something I think that we can stress is a good news item. When I first moved here, the 4th Street downtown area, if I remember correctly, was probably sitting at only about 75% occupancy. In last year, the year before, it was more like 91% occupancy on 4th Street. 5th Street definitely needs some love yet, but 4th Street is doing pretty well. And from what I can, what I've been able to glean from other communities is, if your capacity, if your vacancy rate is under 10%, you're doing pretty good. It's a fairly healthy downtown. Planning projects for this year, like to get Glen Peterson done, city center neighborhood plan, get that well-advanced. There's also the potential for the preparation of a neighborhood plan east of the composite school. That is for the biomass plant. That is projected to go into there. And there's been some requests for a corridor plan for King Street. King Street from the mall to Suris, there's a lot of homes on there, especially on the north side, that are getting kind of old. And so to have something in line for how that could be redeveloped over the future years would be helpful. Off-site development levy bylaw, we're, I'm going to be working with engineering to update to council this year, the area around Glen Peterson, because there's been some lot sales in there, with or without off-site levies attached. So we have to update that. The biggest single item on the Glen Peterson area for the off-site levy is that King Street extension that goes down to Nesbit. And with a lot of that, at least the rough portion of the road being built, that needs to be taken into account. We're also doing ongoing work, mapping with SASC Address, which is our 911 system. And one final thing that we're looking at doing this year is updating the land development and building official pages on our website.
Okay, thank you for that, Richard. Well done. Any questions or comments from members of council? Seeing none, see what a good job you did explaining that. Could we have a motion to accept the report, please? Thank you, Councillor Cernick, seconded by Councillor Ford. Thank you. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Okay. You're off the hook, Richard. You and Haley can ride off into the sunset now. Okay, next, building permit, or first off, water quality report for January. Could we have a motion for that, please? Thank you, Councillor Ford, seconded by. Thank you, Councillor Weller. Any questions or comments on that? Seeing none? Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried, thank you. Last but not least, building permit report for January. Could we have a motion, please, for that? Thank you, Councillor Clark, seconded by Councillor Cernick. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried, thank you. Tonight, under introduction of bylaws, we have none. Public hearings and reports, none this evening. Giving notice, not tonight. Motions from committee, none this evening. Consideration of bylaws, none tonight. Inquiries, Councillor Vroba.
Thank you, Worship. First, I just wanted to mention the Estevan Art Gallery Museum is going to have a fundraiser. It's not going to be a real big fundraiser. We're going to do a rate actually at the Art Gallery Museum. It's going to be on March 23rd, and it's going to feature the Last Birds. They're a really great duo, married couple that'll really entertain us that night.
From Portal, they're very good.
From Portal, yes, yes. And it's going to be a speakeasy, so we kind of came up with that concept, just to, just have the vibe that everybody relax, enjoy. They're going to have some specialty cocktails, possibly a nice charcuterie board to enjoy, and it's going to be a very good evening. So the tickets are actually very reasonable. They're $40 per person. You can reach out to the Estevan Art Gallery Museum for those tickets, or you can call me if you have my number. If you don't, you can go on the city website and get it. But I also wanted to mention that with these inquiries, I was thinking about all the different phone conversations I've had with the citizens in Estevan the last couple of weeks since our last meeting, and all the inquiries I had were actually taken care of. But I just wanted to encourage people that if you do have something to say, I know a lot of people like to reach out, put it on social media, they believe that we might read it and deal with it. But honestly, I prefer people to call me directly, so if you have any concerns, questions, reach out to any one of us, all of our emails, our cellphone numbers, et cetera. However, mode of communication we like to use is on the city website for under councillors, so.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Vroba. Speakeasy, that should be fun. So are you going to have to have a little keyhole that you open the door to let people in? Because prohibition should be on too, right?
It is kind of in that area, so we can't really tell you too much about the evening, except when you get there, it's going to be interesting. And it really brought back a lot of stories, because when I first moved here, almost 40 years ago now, we still had some rum runners, I think, in Estevan. And that Service Valley Theater often does different plays that center around that, so that's kind of another reason why we talked about that concept. And we're going to have some really special gin cocktails, anyone that likes gin, but we'll also have a full bar for anyone that likes anything else. And we'll make sure that we can know how to call you a cab for a safe ride home.
Yeah, it's interesting, the Brotman family, who started a world empire, got their start out of bean fate, running rum and assorted liquors down into the US. It's very interesting.
And anyone who has family roots with the prohibition era, or, you know, used to know their grandpa that would run the rum, feel free to give me a call, too. Maybe we'll use you as a volunteer, and you can tell stories all night long.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Clark?
I have nothing tonight, but if you, any citizens have anything they wanted, have a request vote to call Shelley.
Okay, thank you for that. Councillor Weller, we'll just say, just call Shelley.
Thanks, Your Worship. One thing I did want to highlight is that the city puts out a lot of information, and to the extent that you might not even know where to look, because we put some information in the Voyant Alert app. We put some information on the City of Estevan website. We have an economic development website that has City of Estevan information on it. Tourism might seem that it's for others, but it's actually beneficial for people who live in Estevan to follow the tourism website. We have a City of Estevan that looks at just City Hall, but we also have a City of Estevan Leisure Services page. So I think sometimes the message just gets lost, because you need to be following eight to different sources of information to really know all the ins and outs. So I would like to inquire if we can look at whether it's streamlining it or just making it more obvious how to get that information, because I think there's a real appetite for information, and people just don't know where to get it.
Yeah, that's a good, a good point, Councillor Weller. I know we've talked for years trying to get one focal point that you could go to and get basically everything that's going on, and I think Jaclyn is continuing to work on that, hopefully. Good idea. Thank you. Councillor Ford?
Thanks, Your Worship. I had one inquiry and a couple of events to bring up. The city is hiring summer students, and our Facebook page directed summer students to our website, but once you get to our website, it's just a bunch of script and thing, like it's computer mumbo jumbo, and you, nothing's clickable or seeable, so I was just wondering if we could look into that. So we are hiring, if any summer student is looking, or a student is looking for a summer job, hopefully we can get the website fixed. Couple of events happening this week. The McLeod series has been rescheduled, so that's happening tomorrow. The boys' game starts at 5:30, and the girls' game will follow shortly after that. And then the Southeast Tech Hub is holding an event. It's called EVs Will I Die in the Cold on Thursday at 7:00 PM? And it's going to be a good talk. Gord is a very good speaker. He likes to answer all the hard questions, and if you have any questions, please come, come with them, bring them up, and you can get tickets actually on Eventbrite, and that can be found at the Tech Hub's website.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Ford. Councillor Cernick?
Thank you, Worship. I just had an inquiry, about a past inquiry I had about fire inspection at Affinity Place there, so it's one thing, when city manager gets back, I'll follow up on that.
Yeah, absolutely, good point. We'll bring it up with the fire department, and then we can hopefully get you an answer for the next meeting. Okay, thank you. Okay, I think that's all we had, unless there's any other comments, suggestions? Oh, I'm sorry, usually I do. The lovely ladies. City clerk, any comments you'd like to make tonight? None? City treasurer, none? They're very bright ladies, but they're very quiet and shy. Okay, we did ask. Okay, do we have a motion then to move into committee, please? Thank you, Councillor Ford, seconded by Councillor Cernick. All in favor? Carried. Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone, and good night.